Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:14 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
The seven present we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to at this time thank Rod Woodell from Jefferson High School for being here to help with the Channel 20 Comcast broadcast. Rod, thank you for your help. Tonight, we have set time aside for the public hearing for discussion regarding the renewal of the Illinois State Board of Education waiver 5483-1. We now call on those individuals who have submitted public comment cards on this topic, which we do not have anyone. So if there are no members of the public have signed up to speak on the issue, any questions from board members or board member comments on this issue? Seeing none? Okay, so now we'll move on then to recognizing and celebrating outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, board members. Thank you. Third Hood Marshall School Scholastic Bowl team. Third Hood Marshall School's Scholastic Bowl team was undefeated in the Class AA State Tournament play to make it to the state championship round. The team finished second in the state. Congratulations to the Third Hood Marshall Scholastic Bowl team for an outstanding season. Let's give them a round of applause. Next up, also from Third Hood Marshall, the National Geographic B. Third Hood Marshall School eighth grader Shreance Mamidi competed in the Illinois State B in March. The competition is a state version of the National Geographic B and tests students' geographic knowledge. Congratulations to Shreance on representing Rockford and Rockford Public Schools. Let's give Shreance a round of applause. Next up, our Golden Apple Assistant Principal Award. Roosevelt's Jen Maisick won the Golden Apple Assistant Principal Award for 2017 and named to Investing in Excellence Assistant Principal Development Program. The award is sponsored by the Golden Apple Foundation and First Midwest Group. Maisick will attend Harvard's Graduate School of Education New and Aspiring School Leaders Program this summer. Congratulations to Jen Maisick for this outstanding accomplishment. We got a chance to see Jen Maisick earlier today at Roosevelt's graduation. Golden Apple Award, Rockford Public Schools had four teachers in the pool of 20 finalists for the 2017 Golden Apple Award, giving annually for excellence in education. Congratulations to our three finalists. Christina Dover from Eisenhower, Richard Elston from Guilford, and Kent Holden from Maria Montessori. And congratulations to the winner from RPS 205, Sarah Schaefer from Roosevelt Community Education Center. The finalists and winners were celebrated at the 21st Annual Excellence in Education banquet last month. Let's give a round of applause to all these wonderful educators. And last, but certainly not least, Auburn and Guilford High Schools are among America's most academically challenging high schools, according to a recently released ranking from the Washington Post. This is the second consecutive year both schools have made the list of nationwide rankings. The designation is determined by a ratio, the number of advanced placement international baccalaureate and advanced international certificate of education tests given at a school each year, divided by the number of seniors who graduate. Auburn High School is ranked 13th of 65 in Illinois. Guilford High School is ranked 53 and has increased its ranking from 2016. Only about 12% of schools across the country made this year's list, which includes public and private schools. Auburn and Guilford are the only Rockford area schools to make the list. Congratulations to both schools, their staff, and students for this awesome accomplishment. I believe we have some representatives tonight who are here.
I just remember the teachers are on this line too that were nominated for Golden Apple.
Okay. I've been corrected twice here. I just want to make sure that I, now I need to make sure I give proper, thank you Matt and thank you Carrie Nary. There are, I just, they didn't come up and they've already made their rounds here, but there are a couple of those Golden Apple teachers here. I know Christina Dover, come on up.
Come on up.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Very great.
Thank you for coming out.
Congratulations. And we must, let's make sure, I think he's been through, but let's give Richard Elston his moment in the sun. Let's give him his moment to shine.
You deserve a second shining.
Congratulations. Great job.
Kent Holden! Okay.
Great job, Campbell. Congratulations so much. Congratulations.
Okay, I think I'm done now.
Thank you. Well, we're not done with the recognitions. The board would like to recognize a young man that's sitting over this side of the table, Mr. Matt Bosberg, who has met the requirements for his doctorate degree from Northern Illinois University. So you will now be referred to as Dr. Bosberg from this meeting forward. Okay, thank you, and well-deserved honor. So let's go ahead and move on to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during the petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with our guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. It is not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one person whose turn it is to speak and the person who will speak next. If you're the second person, please come to the front and sit in a vacant chair so we can devote the maximum amount of time to our public comments. There is a clock on the wall over here to help you with your two-minute timing. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Denise Scanlon, to be followed by Gretchen Beeman. And Denise, if you'll turn the microphone on there. Okay, there we go, okay.
Thank you. My name is Denise Scanlon. I've been a school bus driver for the Rockford School District for 25 years. I would like to speak to some of the financial and scheduling ramifications of the school district outsourcing the bus drivers. I feel as an employee and a taxpayer that the best decisions on important subjects are made when a person has all of the pertinent information required to make that decision. I feel in this particular case that you may not have all of the information you need to make an educated decision concerning outsourcing the transportation bus drivers. I will dispense with the emotional portion of this discussion and appeal to your sense of logic in this matter. After little resolution, we decided that our children were no longer safe at Whitehead Elementary. We were instructed by the Student Assignment Center that if we wanted to switch schools, we would have to move into Rolling Greens District. So, we did that. We did as we were instructed by the school board, by your staff, and bought a house 10 blocks within the Rolling Greens school border. My youngest child has been attending Rolling Green for the past two years in early childhood and heading into kindergarten next year. Apparently, the lines have changed and moved exactly 10 blocks to my backyard. We moved away from Whitehead to go to Rolling Green at the school district's instructions because we do not feel safe at Whitehead. We love Rolling Green, and I have trust that Ms. Lyman and Ms. Miller will keep my child safe. I am requesting a meeting with the superintendent. There has got to be something that can be done to right this wrong. We moved to go to Rolling Green and moved to get away from Whitehead, not to be sent back there. I will not be silenced, and I will not continue to be ignored. I am a taxpaying citizen whose concerns should and will be heard.
Thank you, Mrs. Beaman.
If I don't hear back, I will be back in two weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. Beaman. Reverend Derek Shelby, to be followed by Dr. Brandy Brown.
Second Corinthians, Chapter 11, verses 13 and 14. For such are false apostles, deceitful workers, transforming themselves into the apostles of Christ; and no marvel, for Satan himself is transformed into an angel of light. I, I watched the thing with Brandy Brown's seat, and it's just satanic. It is, it, Rockford is a wicked city. She wins the count. They say they're gonna take, they're gonna break the tide, listen, by cards. All over the state, they have a precedent of using a coin. But in Rockford, they take, they use the cards, and I grew up in a gambling family. My uncle and dad, Mark, was professional gamblers. And they taught me as a young how the, the hands are quicker than the eye, you can manipulate cards. Nobody says nothing. And then they, they do the recount, and Ms. Mullins, the recount, she comes back and wins again, and she's like, "I'm gonna go buy my memory card." And she had the recount, she's the clerk, and nobody says nothing. Now, I don't know this year, I know his dad, but I don't know him. He might be a great school board person. But she won it by the people. We're supposed to be in a democracy. Rockford don't use no democracy. Rockford, don't, you know what Rockford reminds me of? Nazi Germany. She wins the thing, and they gonna just, they brazenly take it from her. Nobody says nothing. And then somebody get up, everybody's upset with me. I don't give a damn about you being upset with me.
Thank you, Reverend Shelby.
It's wrong.
Thank you. Dr. Brandy Brown, to be followed by Denise Pearson.
Thursday, May 11, 2017, a recount and discovery took place at the Winnebago County Clerk's Office of Margie Mullins. The recount showed discrepancies to the alleged claim that absentee and write-in votes tied 16 days after I was declared winner. The discovery showed there was never a tie. Based on the discrepancies, it is a just cause for a total recount of the Winnebago County and the City of Rockford votes. Sub-District A voters are demanding justice and answers about their votes. To whom much is given, much is required, and integrity is a responsibility, as well as a principle, that follows anybody sitting in the school board or superintendent's seat. Somebody is sitting in a seat they did not win. This individual is aware of the discrepancies, and so was the other board member that was at the recount. Therefore, it is a plea that a resignation take place effective immediately. You cannot serve in a seat you did not win.
Thank you. Denise Pearson, to be followed by Zebran Russell.
Thank you. It is disappointing to have to deal with such controversy in our educational system. I think our community should be reminded that education is primary, and our children's lives are at stake. And we cannot continue to fight a battle that where decisions have been made, and if it's any resolve, let us be reminded that as we problem solve, it is imperative that we deal with the core issue. So, being a prior candidate for the school board, Sub-District A, I took ownership in failing to get my name on the ballot. Getting our name on the ballot is the core of our issue. And whatever politics played behind the scene, it is what it is, and I am begging and I'm pleading with our community to stand together for the greater good of our students. We have ginormous fish to fry. There are so many components that is associated with our children's education. Yes, school administrators can do better, parents can do better, which is the primary source. And I'm asking that we redirect our energy, and the same energy that we project at the school board meeting that we take to our community, and beg our parents to be engaged in our children's lives. So, again, let's work together to improve our schools, our families, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Zebran Russell.
Hi, my name is Zebran Russell. I've been a school bus driver for the Rockford School District, number 205, for less than a year. A big deal is about privatization. Privatization seems like the answer to everything. Let's privatize the highway system. There will be tolls for every road we use except on private property. Yes, driving is a privilege, but it should not be a costly privilege. Or let's look at the privatization of health coverage. This is one of the many issues this country is facing. Privatization of health coverage has made the pharmaceutical companies and insurance companies billions. The aim of privatization is profit for private businesses. The board talks about saving $425,000 in three years. The board has paid over $400,000 or more in less than a year in legal services to basically fight the bus drivers. The savings of $425,000 in three years has went out the window. Talk to any private businesses or business, and they will tell you that their bottom line is to make money. I personally can attest to this. My parents were small business owners for three, four years. I grew up in a business, in the business world. I was the accountant for the same business for at least three years until it sold in April of 2010. To give in to privatization to the bus transportation in District 205 is basically throwing the taxpayers to people that want to make money off of them. By the way, Austin dropped to the Auburn Knights for first place in the state land crisble. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. At this time, I will ask if there are any board member comments. Mr. Escobedo.
So, yes, I typically don't speak much. So, bear with me for a second. I hope I get my point across. You know, we have mountains to move. We've got a lot of work. And as we, some of us are here for another four-year term, two-year, some of you are more experienced than others. And from what I can tell, none of us are here for a political career, all right? We're not here for, at least from what I can tell, none of us are here for the next job, the next political move. All of us are here, from what I can tell, to help improve our school district. So, just general questions, comments, you know, that I pondered, you know, to administration, fellow board members, RIA leadership, principals, everyone in general, and I guess this is general. But, you know, what are, what are we here for? You know, what's our purpose? Are we here to collect the paycheck? In our case, negative paycheck? What's our end goal? You know, what are we doing here? Why are we here? For how long are we here? And what I'm getting with this is that we, you know, the, the district has made a lot of progress in the past years, and, you know, commend the administration for that. There's a lot of progress being made. But I believe we need to take education matters in an urgent manner. We don't have two years. We don't have 10 years. We barely have a year. We wait two years, some of these kids will have graduated, will have moved on. So, what I'm saying here is that let's work collectively. Let's make sure we're all accountable, and let's drive with a sense of urgency. Again, as parents, we don't have two years. We don't have 10 years. Our best, we have a year. So, you know, I'll have this discussion with fellow board members going forward, but, you know, next time we hear that we've got a plan that we're looking to implement a year or two year from now, and we know it's gonna make a difference, or there's very high likelihood it will make a difference in our student achievement, I'm definitely gonna be challenging them and say, nothing is set in stone. We need to start implementing changes sooner, and we really need to drive with a sense of urgency. I know that doesn't say a lot, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here for 10, 15 years. So, what I guess, what I'm saying is, let's think about why are we here? What are we doing here? How long are we gonna be here? And what will we have accomplished when we're done here? As a community, as a board, as leaders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCulloch.
I just wanted to give kudos to all the staff that came out tonight. I mean, first of all, it's probably one of the reasons that you're as successful as you are, is that you're engaged and you're out there and not only doing your job, but helping represent your school. But being part of the most academically challenging schools in America, what do they say, 12% across the nation, public and private, is an incredible achievement. I'd love to see East and Jefferson working their way up into that. I know it's your second year for your schools, and Guilford has increased their ranking. That's awesome. But, you know, so often, we recognize people, and everybody has busy lives, and they can't always be here, but it's so nice to see the faces of the people that are doing the job that we need done, which is improving the achievement of our students. So, thank you for being here, and thanking you, and I just want to thank you for all you, you're doing to make our system work hopefully better and better, and our students be educated in the way that they need to be. So, thank you.
Anybody else? I would just like to say that this is a very special week for all of us. We have five graduations. Last Friday, we did Wilson. We did Roosevelt today. We have Guilford, Auburn, East and Jefferson this week. And last night, I got to emcee the Academic All-Star event, one of my favorite events. So, it recognizes the achievements of our students at the 8th grade level and our seniors academically, and it's just a great event. So, it's a really fun week to be a board member this week, because we get to do a lot of handshaking, a lot of celebrating, but it's all about how, how well our kids are doing, and we're so, so proud. We had 189 graduates at Roosevelt today, which is, I believe the principal told us that that number was 70 higher than the previous year, that they set a new record for attendance at their school this year, and they also set a new record for the number of credits earned this year. So, kudos to these kids who are, many of whom are on their second chance, and have made their time worthwhile and have graduated today. So, it was really, really fun to be there, and we appreciate, appreciate that opportunity to tell them how proud we are of them. So, any other board member comments? Okay. Just one. Okay, Mr. Siegel.
Tomorrow, I get to go to an Auburn graduation, where perhaps I'll get to hand a diploma to my daughter. In 13 years of, yeah, you know what? I gotta applaud all of you. In 13 years, we have had countless bus drivers, teachers, principals, superintendents. Thanks for laughing. And over the last week, I've been thinking about this, and even under fairly okay circumstances, it has taken a tremendous amount of work to get a child from kindergarten through high school. It's a lot of work at home. It's a lot of work from all of the people that I have mentioned, and many more. And I don't, sorry, I don't think I can express the depth of my gratitude that the experience has worked out so well. It's really, really a remarkable thing. I know that there's a number of people who, who kind of make a habit of really hacking on the school, school district, and maybe they have had just a completely different perspective than what I have had. And if that's the case, I, I'm sorry. But truly, truly, the reward of this public education, I, I cannot possibly begin to pay back. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dixon, did you have a comment? Okay. All right. We'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes of May 9th, 2017, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid pay request log, contracts under $10,000, and travel. And the following bid recommendations, the demolition of 39 houses for the new Kishawaki Area School, the Lewis Lemon Elementary School cafeteria addition and kitchen renovations, and the pre-demo asbestos abatement of houses for the new Kishawaki Area School, the recurring contracts for--
Tomorrow, I get to go to an Auburn graduation where perhaps I'll get to hand a diploma to my daughter. In 13 years of, yeah, you know what? I've got to applaud all of you. In 13 years, we have had countless bus drivers, teachers, principals, superintendents. Thanks for laughing. And over the last week, I've been thinking about this, and even under fairly okay circumstances, it has taken a tremendous amount of work to get a child from kindergarten through high school. It's a lot of work at home. It's a lot of work from all of the people that I have mentioned and many more. And I don't, sorry, I don't think I can express the depth of my gratitude that the experience has worked out so well. It's really, really a remarkable thing. I know that there's a number of people who, who kind of make a habit of really hacking on the school, school district. And maybe they have had just a completely different perspective than what I have had. And if that's the case, I, I'm sorry. But truly, truly, the reward of this public education, I cannot possibly begin to pay back. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dixon, did you have a comment? Okay. All right, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes of May 9th, 2017, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid pay request log, contracts under $10,000, and travel. And the following bid recommendations, the demolition of 39 houses for the new Kishawaki Area School, the Lewis Lemon Elementary School cafeteria addition and kitchen renovations, and the pre-demo asbestos abatement of houses for the new Kishawaki Area School, the recurring contracts for speech and language pathologists with ProCare, speech and language pathologists with Therapy Care, contract for summer camp 17, Discovery Center, contract summer camp 17 for Kate Kilgore, summer camp with Pam Peterson, summer camp with Jacques St. Seer, the other consent items, including the financial results year-to-date through April 2017, the monthly investment report, the IASB annual membership, the workers' compensation settlement agreement, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. McCulloch?
Nine A.
Nine A, okay. Any others? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for nine A, which is the demolition IFB for the 39 houses in the Kishawaki Area School, new school.
So moved.
Mr. Connor moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Now I have the coordinator, oh, Ms. McCulloch. Mr. Schmidt? He's in the back. Did you need him?
I see that he's making his way to.
All right.
I would assume that you would be the person to answer the question, and I apologize for not submitting it ahead of time because I was thinking about it this weekend, and that is, my understanding that was that at some point in time, the city was going to participate in demolition of some of the buildings that we have there. Is that, was that the case?
If they're able to do that. If not, the way the IGA is set, that they'll pay is just a, they have it $300,000 that they would pay in two separate fiscal years. If they can do any housing demolition of that, they would take a credit off that. If not, they would just give us $300,000. So they're working, they have this list out there. If they're unable to do any of the demolitions, then they'll just give us money.
So at this point in time, we do not know if any of these will be, but if they do them and it comes off the bid, it also comes off, I mean, it also comes off this piece, correct?
Yes. There, there's one that they did out there that was condemned, and that's a vacant lot right now, so.
And then the second part of that question about the same bid is, so that's 39 houses. Out of how many is our expectation that we're going to?
These are 39 parcels out there and include one of the business, potentially Hostel. We've got the bids on that. We have 54 properties out there. The 39 are the ones that we anticipate that we either have under contract, that the boards approved the sale and we've closed on, or we'll do that within the next 60 days. The other remaining houses, there's still six vacant lots out there that we need to purchase, but we won't need to do demolition out there. And then we have a handful of houses that we still need to work on acquiring, but those are going to be north of the Kishawaki School, which we have time for. Then once we get that, we'll issue another bid for the remaining houses out there.
So these will all impact the footprint of the new school?
The footprint, and there's some other ones that we've already closed on, on Union Street and like that, so we included this in the bid package.
Okay. And did this bid come, I mean, did that come through Ops? I didn't listen to the Ops.
No, the bid did not go through Ops.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Rollins.
Well, as long as we're asking questions. I'm always a little concerned where there's this much of a discrepancy among the bids. So Entrack Group's bid is, works out if there's 39 houses to less than $10,000 per house. So we're, we're sure they understood the specifications?
Yes. And Entrack has done demolition for us before in the past. We feel this is pricing probably where we anticipated. I mean, we anticipated $391,000 for all these properties out there. So it's very close to where we anticipated. And Entrack is a good company that has done some other demolitions.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item nine A, the demolition.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following items: the appointment of Sean Norton as a 10-month assistant principal, the appointment of Bradley Pemberton as a 12-month dean, the appointment of Michael Slyffe as executive director of transportation, a notice to remedy for Barb Chidley, residency hearing officer report on two of the residency, family residency disputes, resolution authorizing dismissal of certain educational support personnel, reduction in force, non-certified staff, and the HR organizational report and addendum. And the following closed session consent items related to student discipline, unless otherwise modified below. The board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which the students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The expulsion for student 2013 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year and through the second trimester of next school year, 1718 school year. The expulsion for student 4068 is expelled for, this student is expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of next school year. The expulsions for students 4072 and 4089 are held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2017 school year. And students 4085, 4086, 4087, 4088, and 40, 489, that's not, that should be pulled out of there. Yeah, that's an error. So it's, it ends there with 4088. Are expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2017 school year. And then we have the following student discipline EIA's, 3262, 3264, 3266, 3275, 3276, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 86, and 87, and 89, and 90, and 91, 92, and 93. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that board members like to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the closed session consent items.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're now under our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Couple, a couple of things I'd love to highlight. Once again, I just want to comment again on what has been accomplished at both Auburn and Guilford. We have added access to students that traditionally had not had access to our most rigorous coursework. And I also want to compliment Jefferson and East to have made progress on that as well. We really, it's been a long journey, and it was nice to have such great attendance tonight from the teachers and faculty, as Mrs. McCulloch pointed out tonight. That takes a lot of effort on the part of principals in terms of encouraging students through the class assignment process and counselors. It's teachers creating a more inviting environment. And we have work to do. We'd like to see our pass rates continue to increase. But the ultimate, the ultimate impact of this means that a large number, and a statistically very large number when compared to other schools across the country, of our students are getting access to the work that will get them most, most prepared for college and career, advanced placement curriculum. So that is really a tremendous accomplishment that requires a lot of people doing important work. And I think it's a great foundation that we're building in terms culturally in all of our high schools. So wanted to once again highlight that. I also wanted to reiterate my congratulations to Matt Vosberg, Dr. Vosberg, for achieving that accomplishment. It can be very difficult to navigate that, those waters while you're completing a full-time job, and many of our employees do that kind of work, but I, I know firsthand that how much extra time Matt put in outside of work hours to make that happen. So kudos to Matt, and on behalf of our whole team, we're really proud of him as well. And I want to thank Ken and the board for, for recognizing it, and that was on my list as well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, the education committee report.
Education committee did not meet in May. We will meet in June. It's the 20th, would be the third Tuesday in this room at 5:30, and we'll have another board meeting before then, so.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, the finance committee report.
The finance committee also has not met since the last board meeting. Our next, or our next committee meeting will be June 5th at 5:30 PM here in this room.
Mr. Connor, operations?
Operations has not met either. We will meet on Tuesday, June the 6th, at 6:30 in this room, and we will have a very packed agenda, so it may be rather lengthy.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes. Go ahead.
May I say on behalf of all three of our committees that there is an opportunity for the public at this point in time to submit an application to serve on any one of our district board committees, whether it's budget and finance, operations, or education. And that is available online if you go to the district website. And it's also, if you want to come in person and do a hard copy, on the second floor in the superintendent's office. But we would love to see more participation by the community. So please, if anybody's interested in being more involved at that level. Do we have a cutoff date on those? I thought we were doing like a month, but I'm asking my fellow chairs.
Yeah, okay.
They're all looking at me with.
June 1st.
June 1st?
That's what the.
The original.
Okay, so we'd love to have it by June 1st. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
The one thing I'll say on that, yeah, is that can't speak for the other committees, but I don't know if everyone on Ops has stated yet their intention to be on the next year. So that's why it might be a good idea to extend it out for just a little bit.
All right. We can do that.
Yeah. And, and just so people know, I think that they, if anybody wants to know, it's, it's a once-a-month meeting. There's some information you get ahead of times that you can do some reading and, and so that you're prepared and can ask questions. It's a committee to put forward recommendations, but they are non-binding. All the board, the only binding votes are from the board. But it is a working committee to look at depth at the issues before they are moved onto the board and get those questions answered. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to our action items. Our first action item is the Reading Horizons recommendation that was presented by Heidi Detman. Is there a motion and a second to approve the Reading Horizons proposal contract expansion?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Correct. Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor.
Yep, I think this is a good program, and of course, the content, as we discussed last time, is very good. I think the only point, and I've said this several times, is that, number one, I'm glad that it was pointed out that this is a more flexible program in that there will be electronic updates, if I remember correctly, so that it's easier for us to keep the materials up to date. Two things I'd like us to think about with that. One is that because both from a usage and a budget side, and I think this was brought up last time, but just to make sure it's clear, we have a budget for textbooks, meaning the physical copies, and then we have the electronic side. And I think reasonably speaking, this is such a big program, and as good as it is, we should be tracking how over time, and this would be true with all similar programs, how are we going from one to another? In other words, if we reduce paper, that's an obvious cost, and then either we're going to take it out as a savings or we bring it on the electronic side. So we have a balance on that, and especially over the long term. So that's one thing. The other thing, and I've warned several people as I've talked to them, that I would bring this up, being our, one of our resident nerds, we've got two of them here, is that want to make sure that technically, we are keeping up with the most advanced techniques. And so one of the delivery mechanisms that's going on right now in the marketplace is that a lot of things are being delivered through mobile. And I don't think it's too much out of line to say that even though it takes a long time for this to occur, is that as we plan these new programs, we should look for the latest means of delivering this to our students so that they're trained, to quote the old Wayne Gretzky thing, we want to skate to where the puck is going to be, not where it is now. So that would be the thing that I'd like to make sure that we also do. So one is that we look at the two sides, the paper and the electronic delivery of materials. And the second is, what are the appropriate delivery mechanisms for our students that help prepare them going forward? So those would be the two things I'd like to make sure that we at least keep in mind, and it's not just specific to this program, it's really a more general comment.
Any other comments or questions? I would just like to say, I'm really looking forward to your update in the future to tell us how great and the success has been. So I'll be watching for that at a future education committee meeting, okay? So, okay, so let's have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the Reading Horizons program.
Mrs. McCulloch? Yes. Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next action item is the Reliance Standard Agreement that was presented by Mr. Zetecar. Is there a motion and a second to approve the Reliance Standard Agreement?
So moved.
Second. Connor, second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or comments? Now I have the coordinator call the role on the approval of this motion.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our third item was pulled by administration, and the fourth item is the addendum to the Peter Dunland Acquisition Contract Agreement that Mr. Schmidt presented. So take a motion and a second to approve that.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Not? I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of that item.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next three items are the purchase of three real estate properties. Okay, so we do these together?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion and a second then to approve the items 17E, 17F, and 17G.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of these three real estate purchases.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is the approval of the Board Policy 7.270, which is administering medications to students. This was presented by Ms. Holdley, recommendation, or motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Is there any questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the 7.270 Board Policy.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.[1688.02]
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thanks. Our next action item is the 2017-18 Student Code of Conduct, which is presented by Mrs. Hyde Carter. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor.
First, I said it last time, but let me say again, this is a Herculean event to put all this together. A lot of work has been put into this. So I'd say to Mrs. Hyde Carter, excellent work. Dr. Vosberg, excellent work on this. Really, it's just, it's so much detail and so much thought, so I appreciate it. I think the second part, and I think this was pointed out last time, is that building climate has gotten better, and I think, I hope I said this last time, but just to make sure, as I go around to the buildings, I hear nothing but praise from the officers on the buildings and how well it's been run, and continually to get feedback about others coming into the district, noticeable differences in behavior and really the tenor of the buildings. So I think there's a clear and absolute, really obvious improvement. So I'm just saying that really good job, so thank you.
Any other comments? Now, I have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Student Code of Conduct for 1718.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Final action item tonight is the Illinois State Board of Education waiver, student attendance for general state aid. This was presented by Ms. Thorne. Is there a motion and a second to approve this waiver?
So moved.
Second by Ms. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Now, I have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the ISBE waiver for student attendance of general state aid.
Mr. Connor, or I'm sorry, Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to new business. Ms. Thorne's going to present the resolution to adopt the 1718 budget, and I want to thank you personally for agreeing to move this from last board meeting to this board, because it was getting long. Thank you. Okay, you have the floor.
No problem. Thank you very much. Okay. The reason that we're here tonight is Illinois School Code requires that the district adopt a budget annually. We also have a board policy that requires us to do that by the second meeting in June, which is prior to our fiscal year, which starts July 1st and runs through June 30th. And it's also just plain good fiscal and business practice to map out a pathway for managing the finances of the district. So the budget represents the plan of instruction in dollars and is aligned to the strategic plan of the district, specifically Goal 5 and Strategy 9, which is resource allocation. The budget process was collaborative, included department heads, principals, superintendent's cabinet members, and was vetted through several meetings of the cabinet itself, as well as the next level of team members right below the cabinet, and various other team constituents throughout the district. The Finance Committee had the opportunity to see it in two different versions. The Finance Committee is made up of two Board of Education members, the community, and the public is also welcome to participate. And so now here we are for the Board of Education to get their first full view of the draft. So as I've mentioned, all of these pieces and parts came together to work through this. When we started, we did start with a $9.2 million deficit. Through many discussions, much hard work, blood, sweat, and tears, I am here to present to you a draft that is balanced of the fiscal 18-year budget. So the last step before, or after this evening, we will be coming back at the end of June, at the June 27th meeting for a public hearing and for final adoption of the budget. So the district has had many challenges and has a limited ability to actually increase its revenue streams annually, because our revenue streams are based on property taxes in a community in which we all know that the real estate values still haven't recovered from the Great Recession. We have a state school funding formula that prior to the current year was, had the general state aid prorated and paid at less than 100%. We have a state that doesn't always make their payments timely, and sometimes the payments cross fiscal years. Additionally, the state hasn't increased the foundation level of the per pupil amount of $6,119 since 2010. The corporate personal property replacement taxes have decreased due to an error in calculation at the state level. And our own state government still has yet to pass a budget for the current year. Additionally, the district annually has to deal with inflationary pressures from the costs within our budget primarily, which are salaries and benefits. And the benefits, you know, are tied directly to the salaries, include retirement for teachers, IMRF, which is Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, FICA, Medicare, health insurance, and life insurance. All of those things come together to make a very challenging situation. So the good news is here is that I'm here to present a draft balanced budget, and that administration did work hard to come to this point, and we have made several large purchases in fiscal '17 in order to provide some relief to the fiscal 18-year budget, including textbooks and buses. So I wanted to start with the property taxes and kind of work through how the property taxes work, and kind of give you a little context for those of you who don't necessarily know how the process works. The tax levy is done annually in October, meaning October of last year, 2016, is for the fiscal year 18 budget that we are talking about today. So from the 2016 tax levy, part of those funds are received in fiscal year '17 and part in fiscal year '18. So if you're a taxpayer, you receive your tax bill, your first installment in June. So this is revenue for fiscal year '17, which is the year that we're currently in. And then in September, you receive your second installment, which is revenue for fiscal year '18. So in our assumptions for '18, the 2016 tax levy, we did not incorporate any Consumer Price Index, which did produce tax savings for the, I'm sorry, savings for the taxpayer and reduced the tax rate by approximately $2.6 million. We also did not take any new property that was coming onto the tax rolls, which was about $5 million. How this works for the new property, just to kind of put it into context, is that if you have a home, your home is valued at $600,000, for example, for the assessed value. You have to take that value and divide it by three in order to come up with your taxable value, so that becomes $200,000. So then you multiply that $200,000 by the tax rate, which really comes out to about $130,000 in new taxes that the district foregoes. So people hear the $5 million figure and think, oh, you know, that's really a lot. In putting it into context, it's about $130,000 in new tax dollars to the district. So then for 2017, which is the levy that we'll be filing in December of 2017, the recommendation is to take 0.5% of the Consumer Price Index of 2.1%. So roughly 25% of the actual CPI that we're allowed to take, and we're also proposing not to take $6 million in new property tax revenue. Doing the math again, that comes out to about $150,000 in new tax dollars. So at this point, it's purely a recommendation. However, the board has, in October, will be making the decision on what the recommendation for the 2017 levy will be. Any questions to this point? Okay.
I really like question, but more of a, we did go through this at the Finance Committee, so I've got a little bit of background knowledge, and there's a point that I sort of want to emphasize here. So as Ms. Thorne has been talking about, half of, we're looking at the budget, that's what we're going to approve in June, the budget for fiscal year '18, and half of the property tax revenue for that budget has already been set based on the levy that we already did. The other half is going to be based on a levy that we haven't even done yet. We won't do until October, but for budgeting purposes, we are, as part of adopting this budget, going to have to decide what position we're going to take with respect to whether or not we take any portion of that CPI. Now, the background piece that I want to emphasize here, because it's pretty important, is that our position has been, and our position last year was that we would not increase our levy. You know, we did not, we did not take CPI, we did not want to increase our levy, but because of a glitch in the way the district submitted its levy to the county, we were subject to some tax caps that they didn't expect, and our levy actually went down. So our expectation last year, and what the board approved, was that we would levy the same amount this year as what we levied last year, and yet if you read the article in the paper on Sunday, you will see that our levy actually went down. If we take, if we agree, and you know, this is what you'll really be agreeing to if you adopt this budget, because this budget is going to be based on that assumption, if you agree to take that 0.5% CPI, the projection will be, is that it will get us back to the levy that we were at last year, where we thought we were going to be this year. So it sounds like we're increasing, but we're not. We, I mean, we are year over year, but all we're really doing is trying to get back to the levy that we had actually had last year. I know that's all confusing, but I'm not sure I can simplify it any more than what I just did.
And there'll be a slide, in a couple slides, that kind of shows that point, Mr. Rollins, as well. Thank you for explaining that. Okay, so what this slide shows kind of speaks to one of the points that, I'm sorry?
Mr. Connor has a question.
So one quick question on that one, then. It showed, yeah, on this one, it shows the tax rate is still lower. So I know I'm slow on the math side, but I'm not sure how the tax rate is lower if we have the increase for the CPI.
So the tax rate for 2016 is the 7.8, and then what we're proposing for 2017 is 7.76.
Right, which is lower.
Correct.
Iron levy, lower rate.
Right, I kind of understand that, but the fact is we're, so because we're taking that CPI, I guess I would have thought that, you know, the rate might have almost been the same or something like that. We understand the value is going up, and that's the difference. It was just, okay.
Can I jump in or not?
Yeah, please.
So rates are really just a guess at this point, because the rate is really a product of the levy that we do against the total EAV for the district?
Right.
So what they're, that rate assumption, or that rate estimate, is really based upon the assumption that the increase in the EAV will be greater than...
Than that difference.
Than the increase in the levy.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. I figured that was the answer, but when I looked at that, I just wanted to make sure, because I think that's a testament to a lot of good factors, and so, and I assume we have that as part of the assumptions to say, we know that EAV is going up, therefore that tax rate will still go down.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at this slide here, this shows the last three levy years, it shows the EAV, so you do see that it is increasing slightly. CPI for the last two years is below a percent, or it's estimated to be 2.1% for tax levy year 2017. You can also see the new property, and you can see the new tax rate, and then to the far left-hand corner, you can see the point that Mr. Rollins spoke to regarding the tax levy difference. So this is kind of a visual, kind of to pull it all together. I do have a slide here that I can, I'll walk you through as well, that shows a 10-year history of the equalized assessed value as well as the tax levy. So the highest tax levy we had was in 2011 at $170 million. If you look from 2012 to current, basically, we're right around $155,000. So the board and the administration has honored the commitment to the community to keep the tax levy flat, to work towards bringing the tax rate down, and I think you can see that through here, we've been able to do that. As has been mentioned in several, by several different individuals, as the equalized assessed valuation goes up, the tax rate goes down, and vice versa. So this doesn't show the tax rates over those same years, but as the EAV came down, the EAV came down, the tax rate went up during the Great Recession years. So it's kind of a lagging factor when you see the recovery coming back through. All right. Talked about that.
Mr. Rollins?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in. And nobody involved in this is around anymore as usual, but the reason our levy went down is because we didn't file it correctly. So we could have filed it with the county in a way that we just had an aggregate levy, and somebody didn't do it right, and so our, and by the time it was discovered, it was too late to correct it. So we lost $2 million in revenue this year because we didn't file our levy correctly with the county. And if we do, if we do the increase, I'm going to just emphasize this again, if we do the increase, if we take that 0.5% CPI, all we're really doing is getting the levy back to what we thought it was going to be this year.
But what was nice about that is we were able to lower the tax rate for the first time in eight years. And I agree, it'll be more confusing to explain it this way, but essentially, we're going to end up in the same place we would have at the end of two years with this strategy, but the taxpayer got the benefit of the tax rate adjustment for two years instead of one.
That's correct on all accounts, thank you. All right. So this particular slide here shows the various different funds within the budget. I know it's pretty difficult to read, but what this is trying to show is the various different funds, the operating funds, which includes your general and your special ed, your grants, federal and state, food, service, operations, maintenance, transportation, marketing, capital, toward immunity, and then at the bottom, it shows the capital funds, which are your debt funds, and capital building funds and life safety funds. And so what you can, what you can take from this slide is that we do have a balanced budget, and that the capital funds do show a lower ending fund balance, meaning that we're spending more than we're taking in. However, this is by design, we're spending down our bond proceeds on our capital projects within the district. So here's where the money comes from, we've kind of touched on some of these pieces. The money comes from local revenues, $163 million, which represents about 44% of the total, and that's your property taxes and your corporate personal property replacement tax. The state revenues are your general state aid and your mandatory categoricals, transportation, and special ed, early childhood, and other various state grants. The federal revenues is the titles, Title I, Title II, Title III, and the nutrition services program. So for those of you who aren't aware, the state funding is based on foundation level. I kind of spoke to it at the beginning, and it's a combination of state and local property taxes and the CPPRT resources. The state portion is calculated after the local piece, and the CPPRT contributions are factored in. So it doesn't include your mandatory categoricals, and the GSA also doesn't include the level of poverty within the district or the federal funds. So basically, a lot of people think that the state pays the $6,119. That's not the case. That's the starting point, you have to back off your local resources, property, your property wealth based on your property tax base, and then factor in the percent of the low-income students within, to actually come up with your dollar figure. Then, once you have the foundation amount, you have to multiply that by the average daily attendance, which is an average of three months either this year or the best of the last three years, to come up with what the state actually pays versus what the local taxpayers pay. So again, most of the money, the largest part of the money does come from the local taxpayers' base, and then you have the state and the federal revenues. So in here, this shows where the money goes. As mentioned before, the two biggest pieces of the pie, the 50% and the 71%, represent salaries and benefits. So 71% of our budget is salaries and benefits, which makes it very difficult to make reductions without actually cutting into people within the district. So the other areas that we have funds attached to are purchased services, which includes your professional services, professional development, repairs and maintenance, computer leases, cleaning services, insurance, except for health insurance, which is part of benefits. You have supplies and materials, which is your textbooks, computers, general supplies, capital outlay, which is site improvements, and large equipment, and other miscellaneous. The small piece is really charter school tuition, non-capitalized equipment, and your furniture and fixtures. So other assumptions that are included in the budget are that the district does have...
Sorry? I'm looking at my screen. Mr. Connor.
Yeah, this is just one, oh, actually, since I work in marketing, no, I'll put my marketing hat on. On the colors, some of these are really kind of close.
Yeah.
And so I'd ask you to think of some more contrasting colors. And then the second thing is, on the right hand, on the legend...
Uh-huh.
Those colors are impossible to see.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I would ask that for both of them, if there could be more, for the revenue, it was not quite as bad, but this one was really hard to see, and then especially the legend on the right hand. I would make the box a little bigger, and you know... the legend on the right hand, I would make the box a little bigger, and, you know, so that, you know, colors are, yeah, even if you zoom, yeah, you can go 200% on this when, yeah. Anyway, just a suggestion.
Thank you very much. We'll take that into consideration and make that update. Thank you.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
All right, so going, going back to some additional assumptions that are included in our budget, the district enrollment is projected to be flat, although, in the last 10 years, it's been as high as about, almost 30,000, and as low as about 28,100 students. We've kind of already discussed the, the local revenue, the property taxes. Again, CPI is 2.1%, and we're recommending to add 0.5% for the 2017 levy. The CPPRT tax, I'd like to kind of give you a little history as to why you see the decrease in, from fiscal 16, 15 to 16, and that really, I alluded to it earlier, has to do with the state miscalculated the CPPRT tax. And the second piece of that is that they're actually doing reallocation of state resources to community colleges. So, there's two pieces, but that's, that's a $4.7 million decrease in actual revenues as well.
Does that last? I don't remember. Does that, is that forever, or, no, it's just the?
We, we think it will be more at the $19.8 million range going forward. Now, they have not asked back for their error, don't know if they will. We recorded it in last year's fiscal 16 financial statements.
Is the question, how long will that makeup, if you will, go on? So, I understand that's now the new target, but since we are overpaid, I thought there was some schedule for repayment.
I do not believe that there is a, a schedule to repay it.
Oh, it's just reflected in the new.
We've, we've reflected it in our budget assumptions, and we also recorded it as a liability in fiscal year 16, in the event that they come back and ask for it, so that there's no additional financial effect to ongoing financial statements. But we do anticipate that the $19 million is more, is where it's going to be in the future, and going forward. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, some, some of these we did talk about earlier, the state revenue, the GSA, the categorical payments, the federal revenue. The one adjustment that we did make is that we've been signaled that the new federal administration intends to cut Title II funding, so we did incorporate that into the budget assumptions. And we have also increased our revenue on the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program because of the new community eligibility program, in which all children receive free breakfast and lunch. So, we've incorporated that into our budget assumptions. So, from here, these are kind of the expenditure assumptions that we included. Salaries include all contractual increases, meaning for groups that are, do not have contracts, the ASME, the bus drivers, the transportation, the bus drivers, the food service, and the pares, we've included last and final offers included in the 18 budget. Teachers as, teachers include the dollar equivalent of lanes and steps. However, they'll be free to, to signal how they would like to apply that to their salary package when they negotiate. So, any other groups who are currently under contract, whatever increases were in those contracts are baked in here as well. We really took a hard look at healthcare costs, we only have included $1.7 million in healthcare increases. Likewise, we've increased, although IMRF and TRS rates decreased because the salaries increased, and those are percentages of the salaries, you will see increases there as well.
Mr. Connor, you have a question?
Oh, are you going to get to the, I'm sorry, I did a little early.
You jumped a gun, okay.
I jumped a gun, sorry, I thought you were going to be there, so, I'll wait.
Okay. So, under purchase services, we have made purchases and of leases for laptops and iPads that are included. In '17, we actually made the purchase, the payments ongoing over the next few years for the fiscal '18 payment is included in the budget. We also have professional development increases that are included in the budget for fiscal '18. Supplies and materials as I
Okay, now I can go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, if you go back. So, I talked to Ms. Ryan about this. First of all, compliments on the lease scheduling. I know that you all have put a lot of work into that, so I'm glad of that. There's been a lot of thought put into how to apply and the leasing, so I think there's been a good, good job done on that. And we talked about, between the iPads, really, Chromebooks and so forth. So, I know there's been a lot of detail behind this that's good. I think the only thing, and again, full disclosure, I said this when she and I talked, is that at some point, the same comment I made about the Reading Horizons, talking about going from paper over to electronic, should reflect in here too, right? Because at some point, the, the methods, and this could take us three to five years, so I'm not saying it has to be immediate, but the one thing for long-term planning on this is I would look at some very large line items like this one, and say, are there alternate means? And I'm not trying to give a solution, but I will say that things, again, like mobile, have become more common even on the delivery. So, I would say, this would be, because it's such a big line item, and every time you have to do the, the scheduling of replacement, it's, it's a lot of money. So, I would say both for the educational side, actually, in particular, the educational side, but even on the budget side, this would be one of those that I would call out, that I would keep my eye on this one and see what we can do to fit the educational need with perhaps other means of delivering, so. That would be a line item. And let me just say, I won't go off too much in the wild blue, but this is based on marketplace. This isn't just Mike's opinion. FYI, things like app production is down, and what's being used, they figure, Gartner says by 20 or 2021, something like 25% of all business transactions will be done through personal assistants, which would be Alexa, Cortana, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's something to think about as a delivery system for education. And again, she and I talked at great length, but I'm calling it out here, because I think it may help us frankly, on some structural costs. It may cost a little bit on the networking side. I mean, she and I talked about that, but on the planning side, again, this is a nationwide trend. So, it'd be something that I would ask us to look into.
Point taken, thank you. All right, supplies, I kind of spoke to this piece of it a little bit in, in regards to the fact that the revenue in the federal nutrition program increased significantly because of the community eligibility program. Likewise, the expenditures did increase as we served more meals, so, you know, you have, you have more food costs, so that, that is incorporated in there. Under the capital and equipment, we do have investments in technology and furniture for schools. As I, as I go through a little bit further, you're going to see some additional slides that show various pieces of the technology, various programs, or, I'm sorry, various projects under the, the capital master plan of things that are incorporated into the fiscal 18-year budget. So, if you're ready, we'll, we'll move forward on those. All right, so, this, this just kind of tells you briefly how we came to a balanced budget. We did work with the cabinet, and had several sessions in order to make reductions so that we could present you a balanced budget, including, as I alluded to at the very beginning, that we made two purchases in fiscal '17 to provide some relief to the fiscal '18 budget. So, some highlights in the school budget area, we have reading specialist positions that were eliminated, and we have replaced those with instructional coach positions, and have added three for the fiscal '18 budget. We have added five additional assistant principals, trying to think a year or two down the road, so that we're not hitting the budget all at the same time, as we go from 28 to 20 elementary zone schools, so that we have, as the schools get bigger, that the, the school personnel have the appropriate support at the elementary level for that. And so, hopefully, in fiscal '19, our goal is to have all buildings within the assistant principal, or an equivalent, equivalent leadership position, could be a dean, depending on what each elementary school leadership team desires. We also added in fiscal '17, and expanded in fiscal '18, an innovation grant, which allows for another mechanism for teachers to show innovation, as well as gives them another avenue to ensure that all their needs are met within their classrooms. This relates to the curriculum. We have science at both, at the secondary schools, and driver's education, fine arts. We've listed the budget allocations in '18 versus '17 and '16, so that you can see those. We also have language art, English language acquisition, K-12, and physical education, some math and early childhood additions in the fiscal '18 budget. We have also added an aspiring
Mr. Connor.
Sorry.
It's okay. Did you want me to go back?
Yeah, under the social studies and science, again, if you could just footnote, because it says additional textbooks, et cetera, is that, again, going forward at some point, really driven by the education side. I'd like to see how we're moving more of that to the same technique as Reading Horizons, you know, and I'm not a huge fan of PDFs, but obviously, that's more flexible, but I'd like to see it more in, frankly, software or something else, especially, I would think for the AP, there's got to be some national program where they have materials like that, that are more electronic. So, I'd like to at least, maybe as a side group, and again, Ms. Ryan and I have talked, so that might be an area where, because I know she had said she would talk to Ms. Dedman on that, so, again, same point.
Thank you.
I was going to ask a question about school buses, because Mr. Rollins always, you know, is really interested in it. How many, how many school buses are in the budget next year?
Zero.
Zero, okay.
In fiscal '18 is zero.
Okay.
Currently.
Because they're the ones that extras that we
We pre-bought them in fiscal year
I, I just figured maybe you'd want to throw in a few more. Okay, no.
So, I do have a slide on the transportation further down, but the correct answer is there are zero
Zero, okay.
Currently in the fiscal '18 budget, because we pre-purchased those. So, let's go back. Okay, we added some, a new program called aspiring teachers, which will add some additional teachers to the classroom, utilizing paid student teachers, a new bilingual supervisor for the bilingual program, and two district, district-wide clerical support trainers for Areopa team members.
Mr. Connor.
Sorry to be paying attention tonight. Trust me, it doesn't happen, you know, too often this late. Is, you say 50 buildings? Bullet, you know, number two, it says new bilingual supervisor to oversee 50 buildings. Is it really 50? Okay.
So, we have an incorrect number, my apologies.
Sorry, I just, just caught my eye.
You should say 46, and it'll be 40.
I was just going to say, yeah.
Are they counting early childhood?
Wouldn't matter.
Okay, all right.
There are 50 buildings, but not 50 buildings that house students. So, I
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, even then.
Good capture. Okay. Another question?
Excuse me, the only thing on number three, we don't have to do it now, but I'd be interested in where that, I assume that goes to Mrs. Munson, or, because it's process improvement, data analysis, okay?
One is in HR, and one is in Ms. Munson's area, that's correct.
Doctor, sorry, my apologies. So, so, so there's two of them, then, on the bullet three?
There's two.
Okay. Just would like to see what they're actually going to do at some point, just, because they're new positions, and I assume, is it, this isn't tied to decision, the warehousing at all? So, this is just totally separate on the actual analysis and all that?
I think it was determined through, through multiple collaboration and means, that this was a, a need that we needed to address in, in as far as providing support. We're looking to provide support to new teachers as they come in, to principals and administrators, and this particular group, when we hire new clerical support, there, there really is no training that they go through either. And so, this was, this was a, an initiative that we thought was important to make sure that this group of our PST members also received some additional training and support. Does that address your question?
Yeah, yeah.
At some point, I'd, not tonight, would like to know a little bit more about what actually both those are, the training specialists. Because I, one of the things I assume is that they are coordinating with some of the other efforts, as you said, that are cross-functional, that, because we now have the technical specialists among certified staff and other programs, that's why, I was kind of curious.
We'll go over this in more detail at our upcoming retreat. All right, kind of coming back to technology. In '17, we added student devices, utilizing general fund and Title I funds. We did lease those devices with a thought process that they do need to be refreshed on a three-to-five-year basis. So, if you lease them, at the end of the lease, you can trade them back in for, for value, and continue to go on and replace them, instead of having a big investment every three to five years. So, that, that was, that was the thought process that was included in making that decision. We will, as, you know, we'll continue to support these, and in some cases, we'll, we'll need to make upgrades to our infrastructure to be able to support all of the technology within the district. This is just more in regards to, that we have an ongoing pledge to make sure that there's technology supporting our students within, within the district and within the buildings, and that the technology department will continue to make sure that they include in their budget, so that this is a sustainable plan. The next couple of slides kind of show number of devices and the refreshment timeline of technology, whether it be the individual devices, desktops, student laptops, Chromeboards and SmartBooks, as well as, here's some additional statistical data, number of devices, how they were purchased in dollars from the education funds, or Title I, over the last couple of years, and also large ongoing projects related to infrastructure and technology. So, we wanted to make sure that we kind of highlighted for you in a, in multiple slides, so that you could see the technology initiatives that are going on throughout the district, and the dollars that we're spending to support that. So, what's, what's also coming is, in several areas of technology, teacher laptop refresh cycle, smart board refresh, server and networking refresh, and other, we also will be embolting the data warehouse, that you asked a question about earlier. And in '17, we did not purchase any laptops for teachers and do any refreshment, so we will be doing that in '18. Again, we'll continue to lease payments, do device refresh, make sure that our infrastructure supports what we're, what we're doing, and that we, we continue to have the appropriate funds to make all this happen. Capital programs, we have gone through the capital master plan over the last year, and there will be an update at the June operations meeting as to where we are. We have a lot of projects that have been bid, and are ongoing over the summer and in the next year, particularly, as I get to this, we have some projects that are already on the street that have been, have been bid, and will be working on for fiscal '18. The recent pool repairs, track resurfacing, food service upgrades to their, to their equipment. Again, here's the transportation. '16, we purchased 27 buses. In '17, we purchased 26. The goal is to refresh our buses on a 10-year cycle, so 26 buses per year. And at the bottom, you can see the average age of our fleet for '16, '17, and '18, and we are continuing to bring and we are continuing to bring the average age of the fleet down.
I do wanna compliment the board for making this a point of emphasis, and it's nice to see that we've made some progress on the average age of the fleet.
So the, the big projects in the capital funds, obviously, we are working on two new schools, the Cherry Valley School, the bid has come in at sixteen million dollars. We're working on getting the Kuswaki area school bid out there. We also have multiple projects in HVAC, windows, electrical, at various different schools, additions and renovations, all of which are included in the district's capital master plan, and we will be working on these projects in fiscal eighteen. And last but not least, as I spoke to earlier in the, in the program, the board and the administration has really made an effort to keep the tax levy flat, to, to work at getting the tax rate down, and as part of that, we have several district incentives that we have partnered with other areas throughout, other organizations in the Rockford area, including the city, the Park District. We have the home buyers property tax reform program, which is a three-year tax property rebate incentive if you buy a home. It's, the first year of 2016 was very successful, the board actually came back and agreed to do it again for the following year, so we're pretty excited about that. And the other piece in which we have partnered is with our own employees, in which if our employees purchase a home within RPS boundaries, that we will provide some down payment assistance to them. So both of, both of these programs, I, I think are really important. Several of our board members and other community leaders have worked hard to, to make this happen in an effort to revitalize and make Rockford the, the best that we can be. So with that, I will take any questions that you might have.
Mr. Rollins.
Not a question, but just an observation for the board. So you all know that we had pretty much a complete turnover in the finance department this year, and so the approach to budgeting, I appreciate, I appreciate the work that's been done, I appreciate a budget, a balanced budget has been provided, but because really based on necessity, they took the same approach, which I think has always been done in the past, which is just take last year's budget and see what needs to be tweaked to get to where we need to be. I think the goal, and I think that Ms. Thorne shares this goal, is going forward to do a much deeper dive of the budget for the next, for the following year, which I would think I was hoping would happen this year, but circumstances dictated otherwise. And really, you know, the phrase is zero, zero-based budgeting, where you basically go in and you look at everything from scratch and you try to decide, is this, is this the right way to spend the money? Is this the appropriate amount of money that we should spend? You know, a couple of, you know, one specific item that I had asked a question about just because I was interested, we talked about, you've heard the phrase building budgets, that's a, a budget that we give to each building in our, in our district, and they have control over how they use that budget, but it's used for things like the library, it funds the library, it funds the nurses, supplies in the nurses' office, it, it funds general classroom supplies, it funds paper. And I know that there was a talk a few years ago when we had a projected eight million dollar shortfall of reducing the building budget, so I'd asked the question whether we brought them back. And not sure I really got the question answered. What I did get answered is going back to 2011, our building budget, per pupil building budget for elementary schools was a hundred and five dollars, it's now eighty-five dollars. For middle school, in 2011, it was a hundred dollars per pupil, it's now ninety-five dollars per pupil. And in 2011, for high schools, it was a hundred and eighty dollars per pupil, and now it's a hundred and fifty dollars per pupil. And when I asked the question, well, what's the reference point? You know, what's the, what's the standard? What's the benchmark? What do you look at? There's no answer. So I can't sit here and tell you that I think that eighty-five dollars is worse than a hundred and five dollars, or ninety-five is worse than a hundred, I don't know. But those are the questions that I think in the future and going forward for the next year, and as we develop the next budget, that we should probably ask those questions. When I look at the under, I don't even know what page I'm on here, the curriculum department highlights, I see for high school sci, science, for the, for three fiscal years straight, we've budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars for lab equipment, chemicals and lab supplies. Okay, we have five high schools, so that's seven thousand dollars per high school for lab equipment, chemicals and lab supplies. Is that a good number? Is that a bad number? I don't know. Middle school science, we have six middle schools, thirty-five thousand for each of the past fiscal years, that's less than six thousand dollars per middle school for consumables and equipment for middle school science. Now, is that a good number? Is that a bad number? I can't answer the question, and I, my concern is I'm not sure anybody can answer that question in the district right now, but I hope, I mean, I'm, we can't do anything about this budget because of circumstances going forward. I hope we can ask those questions and I hope we can answer those questions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Connor.
I totally support, and I think, one of the things I will say is a compliment to our new CFO and staff have done a good job highlighting and doing what I think is always a, a hard job. I agree with Mr. Rollins that that's the approach we need to take. And one of the things I'll say is that maybe sooner rather than later, one of the things we will do is align some of the planning, and I know there's a lot of really good planning going on on the curriculum side, but I think from my point of view, that's where a lot of this goes together. And my example is, if you do look at science and some of that, I assume that there's things, and we've had a little feedback on this, is, you know, are, are these the right classrooms? And science and a few others really do take specialized kinds of classrooms, just like fine arts and some of the others. So I think it's not just the equipment, although I'd agree on the equipment. I think the other part is, I really do think there are a number of alternate means of experience on some of these things. And I know, again, that, I'm not trying really to be your, you know, tech nerd too much, but I do know that there's a lot of programs, and I know discovery for National Geographic for the earlier grades, and I know that there are a number of offerings along these lines, and I think one of the things, as we're doing this, I'd like to see almost the educational objectives as you're coming up with them and how they align to the reality of some of this, because I think that would help us to, and if I'm implying to Mr. Rollins' comments, but how do you make priorities? What criteria do you have? And obviously, if education is our priority, then that would drive exactly these conversations. It's just not what we hear from teachers, there's a plan. And again, I think, from my point of view, I think we're really starting to do a better job on this, but the longer range planning, right? So it's not just, and I, I mean, as much as, you know, I've given Mr. Rollins a hard time on this, on the buses, I mean, really, this started, I think, two years ago, wasn't it? Uh, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just speaking from the experience that I had that, you know, two years ago, we really started to talk about this long-range planning, and I think you've seen the numbers go down in the age of the fleet, and I'm sure there are other similar methods on the education side. That's what I would want to be baked in. And I'll just say that when, where I work, we do the same kinda thing with planning, we say, if these are our five top objectives, then the answer is, how does our spending reflect that? And so it's not just tactical year over year, and so that would be the other part, I would wholly agree on that, but I would also say, let's have our sights, you know, two, three, five years, something like that. Because even if we don't know where we're gonna end up on the curriculum side, there are some things we could line up right now.
I think this is a question, but it's really not for you, it's kinda like for these folks over here. It's, you know, we have this SIG grant for Kennedy School Improvement, and, and money is going to drive some improvements at that school, and my question is, have we thought about what, what we'll learn from the Kennedy action and what it's gonna take? I'm thinking about Mr. Escobedo's point earlier about what, what, what will we have learned about implementation of whatever we've done at Kennedy that has improved school, student achievement and growth? And will we have the resources to implement that throughout the rest of the district? And, and have we thought about the financial impact of that? I guess I'll let somebody answer that, I'm not sure who the right person is, but-
Without getting into too many details, the, we are having a conversation, have for a while at the bargaining table, and it's premature to talk about that, but we are looking at contractual language that will be for consideration of the bargaining team as well as the, the board and, and the whole membership pending approval of that process. But we're looking at ways where we could explore options, where we could take some of the concepts that provided additional flexibility at Kennedy to other faculty groups that opted in or who are really needing extra resources based on multiple years of challenging results of student achievement. So I think there's more to come on that, but it's really premature to talk about it in the details.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, great job, and this will come for, I don't think you get to sit down, because you have other things you get to present, right? But the, this will come for a vote at our next board meeting, but you're gonna talk about accounting audits and expense reimbursements.
Just a second.
All right.
So we're on the, the board policy four point eight. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. What I am bringing forward, it went to the finance committee at the April Finance Committee meeting, and we did not get it onto the board agenda at the last board meeting. So what I'm bringing forward is a request to change our board policy. In October, we, we made the change, or the requested change, to move from a sixty-day revenue recognition, revenue and expenditure recognition period to a ninety-day revenue recognition period. We reported our fiscal sixteen financial statement reports using a sixty-day, we are requesting to move it back to a sixty-day. There is no feasible way in which to have a ninety-day recognition period and make our October fifteenth deadlines on an annual basis without annually asking for an extension from the state. So we are requesting to move it back to the way that it was, and, and although the request was in October of last year, we will have comparable financial statements for sixteen to seventeen, because we have never recorded our financial statements using the ninety-eight window.
Okay. Any questions for Nikki on this? Okay. Mr. Rollins.
This isn't a question, it's, again, I've told Ms. Thorne this privately, I'll say it publicly, as long as this is it. Now, you can look at the revised here, you can see how many times this has bounced back and forth. August fourteenth, 2012, that was a year after I got on the board, is the first time you bounced it one way, then you bounced it back, now we're gonna bounce it the other way. So pick a, pick a number and stick with it.
There you go.
Not you personally, you've been here a very short period of time, but I'm, I am, as you can probably tell, I'm getting a little frustrated with this.
Well, we've been through three CFOs in that timeframe, right?
And I, I've never worked anywhere where the recognition policy was ninety days.
Okay.
So I, I do apologize.
Next is the expense reimbursement.
All right, just a second. Let me get a mouse. Okay, the reason that we are bringing this forward is because the local government travel expense control act had a change, and so we are requesting to make our policy in alignment with this most recent change. What, what this does is it makes it consistent with the statute, and it requires the board, that board expenses be approved by a roll call vote, and authorizes the board to approve travel expenses that exceed fifty percent over the maximum allowable reimbursement amount by a roll call vote when an emergency or other extraordinary circumstance exists.
Ms. McCullough.
Could you send the red line copy of this to us? So we can see how it's different than the original thing? Easier to see the changes.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Escobedo.
So this is a policy, right, and then we have a implementation regulation, or I forget the term, right? So once we have a policy, then the implementation?
Administrative regulation.
Yes, yes.
Nikki, are there, excuse me, Ms. Thorne, are there any administrative regs that are gonna accompany this?
It's board policy four point six two, this was brought forward from the legal department. So I, I would have to double check.
Can we follow up with, when Mrs. Holdley returns and-
I'll follow up with her, and make sure that there's-
If you'd follow up with Ms. Holdley when she returns and we'll be prepared for the next board meeting.
I had the same question, too.
So that was one, and then, I guess in this, just a general statement, you know, how do we, how do we streamline the process so that we're being more efficient with travel? So that's, as an example, for, as for example, I believe right now, personnel can, can take their own cars, drive to O'Hare and stay overnight, leave their cars parked, pay the fees, whatnot, and come back. I mean, what are, is, how do we streamline so they were more cost-effective? An industry is typical that you find least expensive solutions, and that's, that's regulation. So I'm just throwing it out that it seems to me that we find, need to find ways to start implementing cost-effective practices.
I think, I think there's a couple of pieces there. I mean, one, I think we'd have to-
That was just an example, by the way.
Look at the regulation, and number two, every individual, team member who travels, their, their supervisor approves their travel reimbursements. So I, I think we would have to look at our process and work as a cabinet-level team to, to make that change.
Yeah, all I'm saying is typically in industry, when it comes to travel, it's pretty well, pretty well streamlined down to, you know, the least expensive options, and when it comes, you know, anywhere from car rental to hotels and you name it, but it's pretty well streamlined. And I'm not sure that we're quite there as a district or-
Travel arrangements are made by individual departments, we don't have a centralized, you know, individual or group of individuals that make hotel reservations, airline reservations, things like that. Now, airline reservations is not a good example, because if you travel out of state on an airline, that does come before the board, that's not a good example, but we do not have a centralized travel team that makes those arrangements for the staff with an RPS.
Ms. McCullough.
Well-
Is it, are you gonna talk?
Yeah, same thing. I, well, it, it just bothers me that each department gets to approve it, and if we don't, I, I mean, we have a, I know we have some regulations on it, right?
Why don't we bring this to the operations committee?
Yeah, so let's make sure we-
Just to suggest that, yeah.
Have a conversation, Mr. Connor, you can put that on the next agenda, and that'll probably be a better time.
Super, thank you, yeah, perfect.
Yep, we have a full, the only thing I will say is, typically, even though you may not have a central department, what you may have is say in agreement with enterprise for cars or something like that. So that would be the one thing I'd ask you to at least look into, would volume make sense where certain hotel chains or whatever might be? I think that's part of what Mr. Escobedo was trying to say.
Purchasing agreements, okay. All right, so these two items will come before the board for June thirteenth for a vote. Any further questions, you can direct those to Ms. Thorne. Okay, thank you. All right, we always save the best for last, don't we? Mr. Schmidt. He is going to talk about our final two items, the Auburn-
He is going to talk about our final two items, the Auburn JROTC Fallen Hero Project and the Unite Private Network. Yes, this first one is for a celebration that the ROTC program in Auburn would like to do for, in some of their classrooms, is honor some heroes from respective departments from the local community and collaborate with them from the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Winnebago County Veterans Association. What they're looking at doing is just getting some positive role models in there with the ROTC program. Select those individuals, put a plaque on the wall. They got Rockford Monuments that is going to make the plaque up there, do a little bio about that individual. But they kind of want to use it as looking at individuals that help the community, that are supportive, and for some leadership role models in there for the ROTC classes in the three respective classrooms.
Mr. Connor, and I have had some questions about this one, didn't we?
Yeah. So first of all, I mean, it's a wonderful idea, and I'm very supportive, but I do want to make sure that when we look at this, it's relatively comprehensive. And my example is, if you go to East High School, there's a whole plaque dedicated to the individuals from East, and I'm sure it's the same at West, that lost their lives in World War II. Is a really good example of some of the things. I know, and I'm just speaking personally out by us, there actually was a Medal of Honor winner who lived out in the Cherry Valley area and died, like, I think, a year or two ago, which is noteworthy. There was a young man from out there that lost his life in the Iraq War. So my point is only that I think there's a lot of probably digging that I would ask that we do on this one, because, again, I applaud the idea. It's great. But I'd want to make sure that we really cast a wide and deep net on this one, because I have a feeling, you know, back to the Vietnam War, Korea, there's probably a lot of vets that went through the public schools, and some, I would say undoubtedly, lost their lives. And I'd want to make sure that whoever is running this program really does some real digging on this, because this is well worthwhile. The only other thing I'll say is, I don't know if the other, you know, high schools or some of the other schools would be interested, but I would say, and I know it's Auburn, because that's where the program is, and again, kudos, it's a great idea, but I would want to see if we could engage some of the other schools, because both in terms of first responders, whoever it is, well worth us really honoring them. And I just want to make sure that we had a, again, a comprehensive program. So that'd be my one request.
Definitely look into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, my worry would be, I don't want to forget anybody, you know. So, okay.
All right. Next on the agenda is for our wide-area network. Our contract was up, so we went out there on the E-rate with our 471. We put it out there. Currently, we have 1 gig fiber going from this building and building to building. We put it out there for a 1 gig and also a 10 gig fiber. Our recommendation that we're bringing forward here is to go to, with this new contract, with the 10 gig fiber for point connections from our administration building to all our other buildings out there, which is a lot of bandwidth.
Any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Rollins?
It's a lot of bandwidth. It's a 10-year contract. I don't see a lot of technology contracts for 10 years. So do we know this is going to meet our needs for 10 years?
We're looking at, we anticipate it's going to meet our needs for 10 years as we go out there. Part of this with the long-term contract, we were previously on a five-year contract. It has the build-out of the infrastructure that they have to go put the fiber connections out there, and it's basically going to give us point-to-point to each of our individual buildings. Is 10 going to be good? Is 5 going to be good? I mean, right now, we have 1 gig. We're looking at 10 gig for the next 10 years. You know, we feel that's going to support all our needs that we have out there.
I'm going to defer to our resident nerd on this.
There you go, okay.
Looking for.
I would also add that bandwidth needs don't typically go down. So as we do more cloud services and things like that, our bandwidth needs have actually increased.
Yeah, that's not my question. My question is whether we know, scanning here today, that 10 gig is going to be enough for the next 10 years.
So I will say that also, these are point-to-point private fiber links. The service is managed, so upgrading to 40 gig or 100 gig is simply an electronic exchange.
Okay, so I know, I have no idea what you just said. What I'm going to ask, here's the question I've got.
You can make it bigger.
We've got a contract with these people for 10 years to do 10 gigs. And if we want to expand it beyond 10 gigs, can we do that by going to a different provider? Or do they now have a monopoly with us and can charge us whatever they want to expand it?
Essentially, they could, essentially, they have a monopoly with us for 10 years. However, with discussions with them, they would agree to changing the electronics to allow us more bandwidth. We can go back and try to get them to lock in a price, if that's helpful.
I think that would be extremely helpful, yes.
Bill, I think what I heard was making sure that moving forward, we have, for that long of a contract, in order to mitigate the long-term risk, we should map out whatever the fees would be to buy additional bandwidth. And then I think that would meet the board's needs, so that we had some price certainty locked in. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Rollins?
I think that would be helpful, yes.
We'll see what we can get put together. I would also add that we've been with our current provider for seven years, so...
Is there, is there an out clause in the contract?
I just saw a forecause. I just skimmed it just now. Full disclosure, I did not spend my weekend reading this contract.
No, I didn't read the contract. But, yeah, I mean, if we're not happy, can we get out? I guess that's my question.
No.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, clearly, there's huge differences in price. So I guess the question is that, were the others trying to bid themselves out of this, essentially? I mean, if you look at AT&amp;T, that's, you know, over three times as much.
So AT&amp;T is complicated because of the way the territories are broken up.
Right.
For them to bid out by Jefferson and Cherry Valley and in that area, they have to contract with another provider to do that, so their costs...
So doesn't Unite have to do that same thing?
No, Unite's a private company. They're not regulated by the same laws.
Ah, okay. So anyway, I understand the concern, and, yeah, I guess it depends on your contracts, but is the description you made about the swapping out, so is this always going to be point-to-point? I mean, is that kind of the...
For the next 10 years. Yeah.
Well, yeah. But, I mean, so the point is that we're okay with it being point-to-point.
We'd prefer it to be point-to-point.
We do, okay, that's our preference.
We don't want to go through a third party, because that just adds another complexity, and we can control what goes across those links when it matters.
I just wanted to make it clear that we do want the point-to-point as part of the deal. Yeah, I think maybe some of the details, and I think going to Ops, you know, this might be one where a few diagrams or something would be useful to see how it would lay out. That would be, you know...
There should be a sample diagram somewhere in the contract document.
Yeah, I know.
It's hard to...
All I had, oh, is it in the sport? Because I looked at the contract, sorry. I didn't look at the, yeah, these are really kind of more the details. Wasn't really anything diagrammatic that would kind of give it an idea, you know, how it connected and the rest, so that's...
We certainly have that. We can share.
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think.
Any other comments or questions?
All right, these two items will come before the board at our June 13 board meeting. Thank you, folks, for answering our questions. Is there any other business or comments for tonight's agenda? If not, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Mr. Dixon. All right, second. Second by Mr. Connor. All those in favor, say aye. Pose the same sign. We adjourn at 9:16 PM.